Good evening. May I have your attention, please? Good evening. It's our pleasure to welcome you this evening to the October meeting of the Franklin City School Board. We're so glad to see so many of you in our audience and we are hoping that you will feel very free and be coming engaged this evening as we consider especially the corrective action plan. You are indeed welcome this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask our clerk to call the roll. Thank you. We do have the board here. And this evening, I'd like to also welcome Mr. Shamar Ballot. He is our student liaison and he is at Franklin High School, a senior, I believe, and most active. He's going to be up and about doing some wonderful things. As we read your resume, Mr. Ballot, we were so very much impressed and we're glad that you're here this evening. You've been so busy. You were at a conference, as a matter of fact, when we had our September meeting. So you're quite welcome, Mr. Ballot. We're glad to see you. And feel free, but we usually have some time at the very end of our meeting where we allow our students a rep to speak. So you're invited to do that if an issue comes up and you have a question and it still will impact your students in our student agenda, feel free to ask or have input. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of closed session. That's the certification. I just want a motion to come out of closed session.
Make the motion at this time to come out of closed session.
It's a proper to move in second that we come out of closed session at this time. You heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. The motion is cast. Now, Mrs. Walton, I will single you out to do the certification for us. It's a proper to move in second that Franklin City School Board did convene in a closed session and we did so according to an affirmative recorded vote based on our requirement of provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and that we, according to the Code of Virginia, 2.2-3712D, did act only on those items as specified in number 1, 2, as read. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. The motion is cast. We would like, Mr. Williams has written a note asking that everyone gets close to your microphone when you talk, please. I don't know, I'm screaming, but people always say that my voice is soft and I hope that I'm not offending you by doing so, by screaming, but I do encourage you. I think it's no change for Mr. Williams. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. We do not have at this time any motions from the closed session because we did not finish our business. We're on sort of a modified schedule here this evening in order to give citizens an opportunity to have adequate time for input regarding our corrective action plan. But if you wish to stay until the end of our meeting, we shall return to closed session and when we come out, we will vote then on our action that we should take as a result of completing in a closed session. So at this time, I'd like to ask you to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. It's with great pleasure that I introduce Ruben Leonard and Connor McCoy. They're our seniors in our building. They're eighth graders. After we say the pledge, maybe I'll give them a chance to say a little bit about themselves and J.P. King.
Thank you so very much. Hello, my name is Ruben Leonard. I'm a student at J.P. King. I'm currently in the eighth grade in the advanced class. I take Algebra I and Spanish I here.
And I'm sure, okay. I'm Connor McCoy. I'm in eighth grade. I'm the advanced class also, which means I take Algebra I and Spanish I.
Thank you, students, so very much. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
The proper to move in second that the agenda is approved. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. The motion is cast. So at this time, I welcome all of you. I've mentioned the corrective action plan prior and this is a big item on our agenda this evening and we are so thrilled that you are here with us. And I'm going to, at this time, turn the mic over to Mr. Bell and he will then tell us how we proceed from this point.
Good evening. At this time, Mrs. Michelle Harrison, who was our facilitator on the corrective action plan process, will come forward to present tidbits of the process. Also, she will recognize the members of the superintendent's advisory council who played an important part and a vital part in presenting a document and creating a document that we have to present for the Virginia Board of Education. At this time, Mrs. Michelle Harrison.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school members and Mr. Bell and guests. It is truly an honor and a pleasure to stand before you this evening and share a little bit about the process that we have gone through as a school division to come up with our corrective action plan. And so I'm excited to be here today and excited to be able to share with you about the wonderful people that helped bring this corrective action plan to fruition. So I'm gonna see, is this... We always like to start with our mission and I think that's an important thing. Why are we here and what are we doing here? What's the purpose for the work that we're doing? And it is our children. And if you look, it says, "The mission of Franklin City Public Schools is to work in partnership with students, families and the community to provide..." I'm sorry, "provide enriching opportunities to empower individual learners to maximize their potential in becoming critical thinkers, productive citizens and lifelong learners." And I would like at this time to have all of our superintendent's advisory council members who are here present this evening to please stand up so that we can welcome them and thank them for all of their hard work. At this time, please stand. Thank you. This has been an amazing process and the one thing that all these people who stood up this evening have dedicated their time, their commitment and their passion to ensuring that the plan that you all see today is one that was involved all stakeholders. So it wasn't just one group of people, it was all of us collectively coming together and working together to ensure that the Shamar's and the young men up here and all the students of Franklin City Public Schools receive a tip-top, high-quality education. And so I will start, we started off, we had four meetings, August 26th, September 10th, the 17th and the 24th. And those meetings were very concentrated. Now, we have a correction act, corrective action plan and everyone should have received a copy of the corrective action plan. And that corrective action plan was broken into four components. And so the first component was curriculum alignment, we have human resource management, purpose and direction, and we also have leadership and governance. So, how is that plan designed? If you take a look at the plan, and we're not gonna go over step-by-step of the plan, we're kinda gonna give you an overview of what the plan looks like. The plan has essential actions, which are the necessary steps that we as a school division must take to ensure that we are accomplishing each and every goal that's been set and established for us. And ultimately, our goal is to improve student achievement. We want to make sure that every single student in this school division receives, as I said before, a high-quality, 21st-century, top-notch education. Now, as you go through the corrective action plan, you will see there's an essential action and then under that essential action, you will see in each of those actions, there may be words that are in bold print. And one of the charges that our committee, our advisory committee came up with was that we wanted to make sure that anyone could pick up our corrective action plan and they could actually read and understand what that plan says. And so there are some words that we have and all of us know that sometimes when we go to the doctors and we get a doctor's report, we're trying to decipher and try to figure out, what does this word mean? What does this say? We don't speak medical language. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't have to do that to this document, that anyone could pick up the document, excuse me, could read the document and if there were words and phrases that were not familiar to you, that we would define that. So the bold words, actually at the bottom, have definitions. Now, this was a four-to-five-week process. The very first week, Mr. Bell pulled all of the superintendent's advisory committee together. He met with the committee, he shared with them the charge that as a school division, this is what we are charged with doing. He shared the vision of the school division and where at the end, we want our students and the school division to be. So he gathered everyone together so that all stakeholders were familiar with what is our purpose and why are we here to do the work. The second week, we broke it down because when we look at the corrective action plan, there's a lot of information. We wanted to make sure that we gave every single essential action and every single component very, very specific detail and attention. So the second week, we took the essential actions and we went through every essential actions and we actually broke each of the four areas down into groups. We had four groups and each of the four groups were charged with looking at the central actions and going through just during that meeting, looking at every single essential action and highlighting words that were not familiar and taking out things that maybe didn't make any sense and making sure that the component makes sense to each of us. Then week three, our charge was to move from going to there to looking at the evidence. So what kind of evidence do we need to collect as a school division to ensure that we are meeting our specific goals? So if we're saying that we want our students to be, our schools to be fully accredited, I'm just giving an example, fully accredited and we're looking at SOL scores, what kinds of documents do we need to collect to ensure that anyone walking in, if we gave you this, you would know that we have met our particular goal? So that was what we did week three, was looking for the evidence to ensure that we have completed and/or are working on mastering that particular essential action. And then the week four, our charge was to look at who was responsible for that? So if we're saying that we have these particular essential actions and we have a time, who's gonna be responsible for that? Is it going to be the superintendent? Will he be responsible for ensuring that this task gets completed? Will it be the director of instruction? Will it be the principal? Will it be the parent? Who's responsible? And so we took that week and went through each essential action to make sure that we had assigned the essential action to an individual person. And then week five, we, in each week, and let me share this too, each week as a team, we would come together and we would look at the information and we would make all the changes and they would give it to me. I would take it home, I'd go through it and I'd highlight it and I'd go back and I'd do all the edits and then send the document back out to everyone. So the entire team was constantly and continually kept abreast of all the changes and what the document looked like and how the document was actually evolving over the five to six weeks process. And then the last week, what we did, we had all the components ready, we did the whole document and teachers and, I'm sorry, the teachers, the principals and all the community people were able to take a look at that document and make any final tweaks that we need to make in order to get to the document to the point where it's with you today. So, once again, there are the four areas. The first area is curriculum alignment and bottom line, what that looks like, and there's about seven or eight pages in your document that we will not read to you, but what it basically looks like is we wanted to make sure that our principals are provided, and our teachers are provided with the direction and support that they need to ensure that the written, the taught and the assessed curriculum is in alignment with our Virginia standards of learning. And so what we're doing is making sure that we're providing professional development training to our teachers. We are looking at their classroom observations and their walkthroughs. So when the central office staff and the Virginia Department of Education staff come in, they're visiting the school, they're visiting the classroom, they're seeing what's happening in the actual classroom. The teacher evaluation system, a part of being a teacher and being a principal and being an administrator is, we're evaluated. And so taking a look at that evaluation system and making sure that that system is in alignment to the expectations of the division and of the state. And then making sure that we have the new curriculum guides that we're looking at right now, the math and the English, and making sure that those new curriculum guides help to support the curriculum and are, once again, aligning what the teachers, what's written in the context, what's being taught and then what the teachers are testing so that there's a direct correlation to that. Human resource management, making sure that we have the right policies and procedures in place. It's basically how are we running this school division? Are the right things in place to ensure that the right things are being done? For example, looking at the school board policy manuals and making sure that the policies, if they're accurate, if they need to be revised, making sure that they are revised. Looking at creating an organizational chart in the school division so that everyone, not just in the school division, but in the community at large, knows who serves on what position and who reports to who. So you're very familiar with how the school division operates and how the school division looks. And then making sure that our job descriptions, you know, oftentimes we need to make sure that we're updating our job descriptions and making sure that our job descriptions are in alignment to what are being expected of teachers, of principals, of all of our staff here in the 21st century. So it's making sure that we're updating those and so that they're accurate. And then purpose and directions, making sure that everyone in this school division knows the purpose and the mission for why we are here and why we are doing the work that we are doing. The one step, the first step is what we created, the superintendent's advisory council. And that advisory council, it's been a pleasure to truly work and get to know all the people in that council because that council reaches and grabs all the people within this Franklin City community. So it's not just school personnel, but we're talking about community personnel, people from the bank, people from city management. It's all of us collectively working together to ensure that our children are receiving the best education possible. It's making sure that we have a parent advisory council, knowing that one of the most important voices that we need to hear are our parents. We need to hear your, we need to hear your voice and you need to have input and buy into what's happening in our school division. So therefore, creating that, those two councils. The other thing, as you all saw here, when you saw the videos showing and the pictures, updating our website and having pictures so that you all know what's happening here in Franklin. You can see the pictures. Pictures are worth a thousand words. And when you can tap on a button and get information about your child's school or get information about test scores or when testing is coming or just seeing pictures of what's happening in your building, that is critical and important because the pictures bring you closer to the environment. So making sure that we're updating that. And then any change in personnel and roles and responsibilities, making sure that that's very clear, knowing that what particular position, and I'll say director of human resources, what does she do? What is her roles and responsibilities and how does she impact? How does what she does impact student learning? And the last one is leadership and governance and making sure there's an infrastructure. And it's just like building a house. You never build a house without a strong foundation. And if a house is built on sand, we know that's gonna crumble. And so one of the most important and critical things is to build that infrastructure led by our superintendent where all things are clear. Everyone knows what the goal is, what the vision is and how the school division operates, its operational structure. And what that looks like is making sure that we have a system-wide, a school division-wide professional growth. So making sure that, we're talking about growing our students and preparing our students for the 21st century. We as educators have to be prepared for that, too. So we have to grow ourselves. So in order for us to be able to grow them, then we have to grow ourselves. Looking at schoolwork meeting protocols, you saw some today where they read about the FOIA at the very beginning and talked about closed sessions, putting practices in place and procedures in place to ensure that there's fidelity in the work that we do as a school, as a school division. And then looking at the comprehensive school improvement plan. Right now, we have the corrective action plan, but from that action plan will come a comprehensive school improvement plan, which means we're gonna take the big plan here and we're gonna drill a little bit deeper and we're gonna get more specific and more targeted about what's happening specifically at each individual school. And then a formal communication plan. If communication is not clear, there can be so many things that can go wrong. And the beautiful thing about having a communication plan, we know who, we know when, we know where, we know how and all of the above. And so making sure that everything that we do is like that transparency. There's nothing to hide here. We're opening up and letting it know what needs to happen, what's happening in our school division and there's a clear pathway of who does what and the communication is out for all to hear and see. And last but not least, supervision and evaluation process, talking about teacher evaluation and supervision, we all need to be evaluated. Students are evaluated, teachers are evaluated, principals are evaluated, superintendents are evaluated, I mean, we're all evaluated, consultants are evaluated. We all have to have a measure, a system of measure and accountability because in order for us to do our job effectively, we wanna make sure that we get that feedback because ultimately, it's about stretching us and growing us to be the best us that we can be. And so it's looking at that evaluation process. So, we thank you for coming out tonight because we know you could have been somewhere else, but it says a lot when you're here that you value education, you value your children and you wanna play a critical and vital part in their lives. So we thank you for coming here and we really want you to take a look at that plan. It's a lot to digest, it's a lot to take in, but we had a phenomenal team who was committed to the charge, who have the heart and the passion and the love for children and you can't beat that. And what a blessing, I say, that you're in a school division that loves your children that much and cares that much that you have a group of people who want nothing but the best for your children. So thank you for coming out. Now, we ask questions, thoughts and reflections and Mr. Bell, our gracious, awesome superintendent, if you have any additional questions besides today, he will also take questions as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. At this time, I would like to call two members of the advisory council just to, just talk to the community about what we did as we were working through this advisory council as a collaborative unit. We all know being in V formation is so important because as long as we're headed the same way together and working together, success is, is going to come. At this time, I would like Mrs. Mary Hillier and Ms. Catherine Connor to please come forward and just to share briefly for a few minutes on your experiences with the advisory council before we hear any other comments from the community.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone, to our superintendent Bell and our mayor and city council members. Although I'm not in the city council role, I have to acknowledge the city manager, city attorney, all the correction action plans council. You know, it's hard to follow someone such as our facilitator, Ms. Harrison, which gave an in-depth, in-depth action of the correction plan. She gave an in-depth review. But, and I don't want to be redundant, but my God, I cannot say anything except to repeat some of the things that she said. I've jotted down a few things today and I found that they are redundant. So, and superintendent Bell asked for three minutes. I said, "My God, I have to repeat everything that she said." But anyway, to the Department of Education representatives, to our superintendent of Franklin City School Board, Ms. King, to the school board members and to our facilitator, our great facilitator. I am Mary Hillier, one of the representatives of the superintendent's advisory council for the corrective action plan. I would give you a brief, very brief overview of the previous meeting. Now, we started out on August 26th and we were instructed to give the plan or the area which we would like to work in. I chose purpose and direction. We worked in a committee, a group, for four weeks, three weeks, three weeks, and we accomplished the said. I, the council consisted of the chief, some teachers, the building administrator, central office administrator, parents, students, community members, business partners and faith-based organizations. And again, the target areas were curriculum alignment, human resource management, purpose and direction, leadership and governance. Representatives again worked within these targeted areas to simplify the wording of the essential action plan during the month of September. I thank you for allowing me to work with this council and I'm enjoying it. God bless.
Good evening. Thank you also for the opportunity to speak on my experiences in the superintendent's advisory council. My name's Catherine Connor. My husband Mike and I have two children at S.P. Morton, one at J.P. King, two at Franklin High School and one Franklin High School graduate currently at Virginia Tech. I'm also an assistant teacher at S.P. Morton and the S.P. Morton PTA treasurer. I am very active in my students' education, but I also feel it's my responsibility to be active in the success of the students that I touch on a daily basis at S.P. Morton. And I even more strongly feel that it's the responsibility of all Franklin residents, whether they have children in the schools or not, to be active in their success. The success of Franklin's future depends on these children. So when superintendent Bell and Donna Walton invited me to join the superintendent's advisory council, I welcomed the opportunity. I had only briefly... I had only briefly glanced at the corrective action plan. And I'm involved in my children's education. So I am sure most people in Franklin hadn't even heard of it. So I welcomed the opportunity to get involved. Going through it, it's confusing. So the main task, as already explained, was we needed to make this understandable for anybody. Okay? So terms like formative, summative, even stakeholder, which we hear constantly, what does that mean? Most people, if you're not in the schools regularly, don't understand that. So we defined these terms. We also closely assigned accountability for every task in this plan and then set goals, whether it was a finite, this needs to be done by this date, or this is something that's going to be ongoing year to year. I strongly encourage all parents, residents, and business owners in Franklin to read this action plan, ask questions, speak to those accountable, keep an eye on those deadlines, and find out where we are. The success of our students and the future of Franklin does rely on everyone's involvement and efforts. I appreciate the opportunity to be involved and look forward to our next steps.
At this time, we will entertain any more comments or excerpts from the community concerning the corrective action plan and the questions you may have, your thoughts, reflections. Please come forward. If there are no questions from the community, board, board members, do you have any questions at this time for the council or for myself? Well, I'm a part of the council, so I'm not acting as one. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say on page 39, we have the term Edison Learning. But now we have Calipso, on page 39.
We will, we are put in a disclaimer to let everyone know that we started out, I think, through this corrective action plan with Edison. But now it is Calipso Learning. So we'll put that disclaimer in, Ms. Austin, okay? And we'll get those list of committees. And what we tried to do also, Ms. Godwin, as you heard Ms. Hilliard, what we tried to do to try to, I guess, reduce some of the number of committees or, you know, try to get laser-like focus on some of the areas. We created those four subcommittees within the Advisory Council based on the four headings. So some of those persons that are on the Advisory Council and those subcommittees, we may call them back later. But I want the community to understand just because those persons that are on the subcommittees, you also can join in as well. Because those areas may be something that you want to be involved in. Remember, the entire, it takes this entire community to make sure that we have success. So just don't think that the subheadings are limited to those persons that you see here tonight. You can join in as well. We welcome that.
Yes, and Mr. Bell, for clarity, did most of the Advisory Council volunteer to serve?
Some volunteered, some volunteered. And some, Dr. Leonard, were asking school board members about being a part of it. And then, of course, as we looked at the public hearing from last year, people were waiting to take part in this process. Yes, ma'am. So I think overall, and I'm, but I think overall as a city, everyone was just anxious to jump in and provide a document of this sort anyway.
Okay, going back to Essential Action 2.4 that Mrs. Godwin referenced. Now, she's, she asked in reference to committees. However, this Essential Action is specific to supplemental duties on staff. So is that something we're adding to 2.4? Is that something that's going to be separate?
No, this, the Essential Actions were already in here. So this is not, this is in stone. So we can't change any of this anyway.
All right, so what she's asking for, that will not, we will not make an adjustment?
No, 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 ma'am, no, ma'am, no adjustment.
I had some questions, you owe to other members, probably. It's like you should try and do that. The Advisory Council, but we look at maybe the future and projected responsibilities, subcommittee. Are we thinking the long-range plan and the review of the comprehensive plan, Mr. Bell?
Indeed. Our next process, which will begin on October the 29th, Advisory Council members and any other community members that want to take part, is the strategic plan, which will involve the entire division as well as our schools. So yes, ma'am. This is, and those, those subcommittees will still work on various areas as we break it out into a more in-depth and more laser-like focus on some of those areas. And we'll try to align those areas with our division goals that the board has already set. So we'll try to stay in alignment with that.
And the comprehensive plan, according to standard support, is not reviewed until the R year. So this would mean that if we get the long-range plan completed this year, that would impact the comprehensive plan for review for next year. So wonderful. So we're starting with it. I'm glad you're starting the long-range plan. Another question that I had, that a formal observation of teachers versus formative observation. I saw the term used, and I guess maybe what I thought, I concluded, that you are not including walkthroughs as a part of formal or R U. Is there a differentiation?
Any members of the council, you all want to take that, but I can answer. Uh, the formal, there is a document that has been created through him and Mary that we adopted their portions of the formal observation tool. The informal, there is also an informal document. And usually, our informal walkthroughs are from 15 to 20 minutes. A formal is usually around 35, 40 or longer. Could be the entire period, depending on how involved the observer gets into the, into the lesson. Now, we also have what we call a sweeps. And sweeps are five minutes or less, usually. And a lot of times, our principals do sweeps first thing in the morning as they check on the culture of the building and just a management piece. That is, that's a quick management piece as well. But you do look at three or four things as you're doing your sweep. Objective on the board, agenda, are the kids engaged? Is the learning environment conducive to learning? Those are just quick, bam, ass-like things as you're walking through before you start the rest of the day. Yes, ma'am.
Term interchangeable may be definition of the term. And my last question, I know that Virginia Department of Education was going to design the rubric that we use for the corrective action plan. And I'm not criticizing that at all, not trying to change any language in it. But it just seems that the timeline status would be on the very far right and probably would not limit itself to any clarity. And I don't know because it seems as though when you say completed, not completed, and then you have the different strategies, the difference, it's not, it's not, it might look as though, and leading from left to right, that you have completed the whole Essential Action. Yes. Oh, thank you. Well, thank you so very much. As I read, what was completed, what was not completed? That's wonderful. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chief, are you referring to the right side?
Yes. If you look and say, as I read this, and you have Essential Action, you have the person responsible, then you have timeline status. But you have different strategies there that would indicate the completed effort. But I started looking at it that it would be more effective and even more exact of what was completed in that particular essential action if the timeline status was on the very far right. Yes.
And I did have a question. That question is, I don't know if Mr. Bell wanted to take that, Superintendent, or Ms. Harrison. I was kind of surprised that our stakeholders, our community tonight, did not ask Mrs. Harrison and represent her qualifications as a consultant. So do you want her to speak to that? Yes.
Would you come through the mic, please, Mrs. Harrison?
Thank you. I was a second-rate teacher for five years. Then I was a assistant principal for five. I've been a principal for seven, a director for K through 12, instructor for three. So I was in the public education studies for 20 years. And then in 2010, decided to take a separate stage and start my own consulting company. And I've been in three different, four different school divisions, working on curriculum development, I was a lead turnaround partner, an internal lead partner, and working with Mr. Bell on the Strategic Advisory Committee. So I've had a wealth of, and a breadth and a wealth of experiences. Many of my choices have been in very challenging school divisions. Where, and I was just telling, Ms. David just met her today for the first time. It wasn't called school transformation way back then. We just, we had challenges and we got there, we rolled up our sleeves, we got our hands dirty, our feet wet, and we made it happen. Today, it's called school transformation. And so every school that I've been in as a principal has been fully covered. And we had sports in the 30s, 40s, and 50s. And so it is an honor and a blessing to be able to share my gifts. And I always used to wonder, why did all of these, why did God put me in situations and schools with all these challenges? And I realized that He knew I would be here today. And I, when I come to you and when I share information with principals and with superintendents, it's not that I picked up a book and I've read it in a book. It happens, I've experienced it, I've lived it. And so I know I've been prepared for the work that I'm doing today. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I know, having served on the Advisory Council, you've shared some of that information with us. But I thought it would be nice for the, our community to hear.
Thank you.
In reference to 4.7, it says that the elementary and middle school principals were assigned a coach from DDOE. Also, the middle school principal has additional coaching from the turnaround partner. And the elementary principal has additional coaching from the director of instruction. Who is the coach from DDOE for them?
Vicki Oakley. Vicki Oakley has been assigned as the DDOE coach.
It was required, we had to have that, but you know, the leave program was there. They got DDOE coaches there. It was required.
Yes, ma'am. They sent, they sent Ms. Oakley as well. Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
With you around.
Your man.
I have one last question. I'm going to the back of my page. And it was 4.6, if I may ask that question. That, 4.6, the way there under evidence of implementation, the division superintendent's role has been clearly defined and shared with all board members, according to superintendent's contract. I think there, it should definitely, we should definitely specify that it was mutually agreed upon, being you're talking contractual language there, that the school board and division superintendent have mutually agreed upon a clearly defined role for the superintendent. Thank you.
Community, we've given you time now to kind of look at more of the pages. Maybe now you may have some questions or thoughts or reflections. And do know, if you don't have any tonight, my door is always open. And we also have, you can call our number at 757-569-8111. And also, we have our website. You can just email me and just ask your questions at that time if you do, you know, if you don't want to come down tonight. We have to have this submitted to the Virginia Board of Education by November the 7th. So the board will continue to review this document. We have a few more revisions to make to the document before the board comes back and finally approves it, so then we can submit it. So you still have time to present us with any comments on your, as you look through this document. Please feel free.
Again, we thank all of you, our consultants, members of the Advisory Council, and community, the community at large, for just participating in this experience. It is most significant and it shows our commitment to ensuring that our students get an adequate education in the city of Franklin for the 21st century. So again, I'd like to ask the schoolwork members to stand and let's give everyone who was involved a round of applause. Thank you also very much. At this time, we have good news. Do we need an adoption of this plan, Mr. Bell? Not yet. Okay, good news.
Madam Chair, board members. At this time, Mrs. Shakwita Seaborn will come forward to recognize those persons as well as organizations for Disability Awareness Month. Mrs. Seaborn.
Good evening. October is always a wonderful month to bring students before the school board because it is National Disability Awareness Month. And as you all know, we are doing some fantastic things in Franklin for our students with disabilities. So tonight, I just want one of our students to highlight one of our programs, which is community-based instruction. And our community-based instruction program would not be successful without our community partners. So tonight, we not only want to recognize our students for the wonderful things that they are doing, but we also want to thank our community partners for allowing our students to come in, receive that head-on work experience, and just engage them every day when they come to their businesses. I will introduce Andre Franklin.
My name is Andre Franklin, and I participate in community-based instruction. I really enjoy going to the businesses to work because we did not have this program at my previous school, Will Joe Western High School. This program allows us to have work experience as well as meet a lot of new people. My classmates and I are thankful that the businesses allow us to work there, and we would like to recognize you business tonight. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate. Walmart. Habitat for Humanity V store. Tidewater Physical Therapy. Ruth Campbell Memorial Lobby. City of Franklin. Again, we thank each of you and your staff for recognizing our abilities and not focusing on our disability.
This is Mr. Andre Franklin. This is Mrs. Tenazia Brown. We also have Oceana Cheston. And then we have Ms. Jones, who also accompanies the students out during community-based instruction. So as you can see, we have a wonderful partnership. We continue to look for additional businesses to expand our community-based instruction program. But with this program, the students are receiving that employment experience. And when they leave us, they do want jobs. So this is a great program, and I'm very pleased to present them for good news.
We thank Mrs. Seaborn and Mrs. Jones. Is that, is that the marketing teacher, or you just, wonderful. We thank you so much for what you're doing to help these students. And we are so proud of the students and displaying skills of presentation here this evening. We wish all of you the very best.
Thank you, Mrs. Seaborn, Ms. Jones, students. At this time, we would like to recognize our golf team from Franklin High School. Our golf team, they are district champions. And at this time, Coach Lees and will come down and recognize the young men who brought us gold. Along with the principal, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you all. We, this is our new, by the way, this is our new golf uniform for next year. We're just trying to tell them what it looks like. But we had a, a great year. Clarify, we were conference 41 champions. This year, we had Brandon Bly. Timmy the Carrot. Chance McCoy. And Connor Shanks. We have everybody back for next year, so hopefully we can repeat again. But one thing, I'm very proud of these guys, is everyone I'm gonna have over a 3.25 GPA. So, that's cool. Thank you.
Great job, young men. Congratulations, Coach, Mr. Phelps. At this time, Madam Chair, board members, I would like to read the Virginia proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week for October the 23rd through the 31st. Whereas in 1985, the Red Ribbon campaigned again as a means to address the importance of a healthy, drug-free youth. And whereas the Red Ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Camarino, a enforcement administration agent who was murdered in Atlanta. And whereas by 1988, the Red Ribbon Campaign was adopted by Congress. And whereas since 1988, the Red Ribbon Campaign has been sponsored by the National Family Partnership, which works year-round to raise awareness of the social destruction caused by drugs in America. And whereas cities across America continue to be plagued with the numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. And whereas local leaders in government and in the community are crucial to the support needed to reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And whereas October the 23rd through the 31st, 2014, has been designated National Red Ribbon Week. And whereas Red Ribbon Week is an opportunity to encourage people to seek the help they need and to recognize the work of those providing education on drug use, as well as those protecting youth from drug use. Now therefore, Terrence R. McCullough, the governor of our state, does hereby recognize October the 23rd through the 31st, 2014, as Red Ribbon Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And the governor calls this observance to the attention of all of our citizens.
Thank you. We do hope that there will be an appropriate observance. Thank you. Citizens' time, and we would like to ask our clerk to inform us relative to whether or not anyone has signed up. Thank you. So we have no one who has signed up to speak at this time. So we should go next to the report of the superintendent.
Prior to the superintendent's report from our Central Services Unit, at this time, Mrs. Gail Wade, can you come forward with the recognition of the buildings that will take home the gold for the month of September for student attendance and staff attendance?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bell, and good evening, board members and Franklin community. It's my pleasure to recognize the schools who have the best teacher and staff attendance, as well as the best student attendance. And this would be for the month of September 2014. First principal, you all will come forward. This is healthy competition. Maybe I'll say friendly competition. Okay.
I'll begin with the best teacher and staff attendance for the month of September, Coach Franklin. 98.3%.
And we need to point out that this is the first month of recognition for 2014-15 academic year, and that the school who gets the recognition the greater number of times is recognized at the end of the year with a party of some kind. So please pass the word along so that we will keep this big competition going on. Thank you all so much. Congratulations.
At this time, Madam Chair, board members, Ms. Rachel Yates will come forward with the monthly financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have before you the September reports for the general fund, as well as the August reports for the cafeteria fund, and new last month. And again, this month, we also have the federal funds revenues and expenditures for the month of September. And I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Are there questions for any members of the board? I just have maybe one or two. First one, will we complete and meet that deadline for all the completed projects under the CIP? Was that November?
It is November of 2014.
2014?
Yes.
So are we, this is it?
I would have to defer, but I believe we're on track to meet it all. But I'd have to defer that to Mr. Custer.
Is there anyone else with another question?
Mr. Custer, when you, when you report on through the other report, please address Mrs. King for that, okay? At this time, we will move forward to the superintendent's report. Ladies first. Don't move too fast.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair Board Members, my superintendent, colleagues, and my community. It's my charge to present to you the portions of the MOU that pertain to instruction. First and foremost, I would just like to begin by stating that we have conducted our monthly division walkthroughs at JP King Franklin High School. And I did not list September 8th because I did not go, because I was out sick. But all schools, we conducted walkthroughs in all schools in September, and that's the division team. And we will do that every month. Also, we attended VAS training, which was held in Richmond at the Marriott. And there, we talked about the, I guess what you would call the elimination of some SOL tests. However, they are not necessarily eliminated, but they will not count towards accreditation. But we still need to assess our students. And we will be using the benchmarks for that. It's in superintendent's memo number 278-14, if any of you want to refer to that. But this year, grade three history, grade three science, grade five writing, US history to 1865, and US history 1865 to present, will not be tested as an SOL test. So I wanted you all to be aware of that. There is additional information as well as legislation that applies to that. And I'd be happy to provide you with that documentation so that you don't have to research it yourselves. But we still are responsible for assessing those students at the local level. It just will not count with the SOL score. Before I proceed, are there any questions about that?
As long as you're going to provide that information to us, we don't have to go and research.
Nope, have it right here, but I can make it count.
That's fine.
Yes, indeed. Okay. Yes, please.
Don't think that the work is being reduced because the tests have been reduced. When this decision was made, and as superintendents, as we gather, to receive the information about the alternative assessments, most large school districts have personnel that can quickly come up with a rubric or some type of project-based initiative that can provide alternative assessments. In a smaller division, it handcuffs us again where so many people are wearing tin hats. But we are trying to work to work smarter instead of harder and trying to, I guess, broaden some of our expertise in an arena where we can create something that is authentic, something that is still comparable to an SOL assessment, where we can assess our students at the end of the year to show progress. This local alternative assessment basically is a movement to showing progress. As we look at the testing situation in the state, a lot of you have read that this is going to be one of the hot topics at the General Assembly this school year. Right now on the table, expedited retakes is on the table for elementary and middle as a short-term, as a short-term initiative to try to decrease the number of accredited warning schools or denied accreditation. This long, this alternative assessment piece is a palette to look at the long range of, and I'm gonna choose my, I'm gonna pick this word, growth. Because right now, we, we started this growth thing two or three years ago, but it went away. So now, it's back in our hands, and we have to look at the alternative assessments, which can involve a performance assessment. We don't necessarily have to do anything project-based. We don't necessarily have to do a rubric. But we do have to do something that is going to be comparable, still in alignment with the SOLs. So we will keep you informed. Dr. Smith will provide you with that information. But I want to reiterate, by this movement, it's not taking work. this movement, it's not taking work off of somebody's plate. It's actually adding work to us, the small divisions.
Third grade history, US history, and US history 1865, none or high school. No ma'am.
So when we make that decision early on, are you working on that current alternative assessment, it's going to look like, when should the board know what your decision has been?
One of the things, and Mr. Bell can chime in, but one of the things that we are looking at, because it is a pilot year, all the divisions are trying to roll it out, is to maybe not have the authentic assessment in all of those grade levels across the board, but if we can come up as a team with the lead teachers and our specialists to design these authentic assessments or these various types of assessments beyond the benchmark, then that's what we're trying to do now. But it is a pilot, and this is the year that if we want to try something without having anything punitive, I guess, attached to it, this is the year to do so. So as we move forward, I will definitely keep you all posted, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention at this point, just so you would know that this is something that we are moving forward with, but we want to do it as a team. We want to do it as a pilot so that we can come away with something that maybe we can replicate as we move forward from one year to the next.
And it's so important that we keep, that it cares if students are performing well.
Yes, ma'am.
That's going to impact the performance and make that decision, areas we possibly need to make.
And the soup's memo that I referred to came out October 10th. So we are moving as fast as we get the information and as fast as we can get trained and become knowledgeable as to what this new legislation is asking. Also, on here, you will note that we have attended the Smart Beginnings Western Ty Water Meeting. Last year, we tried to do the kindergarten registration as a region, but we got, I guess it was a big storm, and we had to cancel it and rearrange it, so hopefully that'll be an initiative that will continue to be on the table. And I would like to report that the principal and the reading specialist at SP Morton also attended, as those are concerned their babies. Also, as a request from the board, and if it's the will of the board, I will share with you the tutorial or after-school tutorial schedule for the year. SP Morton tutorial will begin October 29th through May 28th, grades three through five, Wednesdays and Thursdays, 3:30 to 4:30, and those days are subject to increase as we get closer to SOL testing, as well as the possibility of looking at other grade levels depending upon the data. For JP King Middle School, October 13th through June 5th, grades six through eight, three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, three to four fifteen. And Franklin High School always starts early. They have to get rolling. September 8th through June, grades nine through 12, four days a week, 3 o'clock to 4:30. We wanted to let you all know that we are getting started moving forward. Yes, ma'am.
My concern is that, and I really appreciate everything this community is doing for us. I mean, I find that the community is really engaged in trying to help us with remediation and other tutorial services that are needed, but our programs for tutorial, those programs at each school are mandated by the state, or are they?
Well, those programs at each school is actually what I would call best practice because what we are trying to do is address it, the issues as we go, instead of waiting for a test or an assessment every quarter or every, you know, nine weeks. If students are showing gaps, we want to address those immediately, and we use our staff because they're highly qualified, everybody's endorsed now, and we want to give the kids the best that we have. Also, after school, one of the things that we're looking at is if they didn't get it this way during the school day, then we have to teach it a little differently after school. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. I wouldn't say it's necessarily mandated, because I was reading some regs that are on the table where something might change regarding that terminology. It was mandated, and I believe the, is it the SOQ or the SOA? I don't want to misspeak, but in one of those documents, it was mandated that our students who were struggling in reading and math had to have after-school tutorials. So you are speaking correctly based on that.
And especially schools who are in improvement.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think the DOE provides the funding for it, so schools that are in improvement almost, well, they.
It's pretty much mandatory, it's written in the grant.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So my concern is that we have quite a number of tutorial programs after school across the community and churches and different places, and I'm actually delighted that we have that, but I don't think that anything replaces that certified teacher support when it comes to working for attainment of mastery of the SOL, because our teachers have been trained in doing that. So somehow, I'm hoping that we can get a message out to the citizens, to the parents, citing those days.
Yes, ma'am.
Where we are having the tutorial support being offered for students.
That would be.
If it's possible for us to do that.
Website as well as notification.
So I'm hoping that we, I believe that the community will work with us on that, but we do need to have those certified teachers doing the tutorials program.
Madam Chair, I did have a question also for Dr. Smith in reference to the frequency of tutorial for SP Morton. Is it just the two days?
Currently, it's two days, and I'll explain why.
Okay.
As Ms. King alluded to, the grants, we have a school improvement grant that we write to procure funding for tutorial services. We're currently awaiting approval of that grant, which will provide us funding. Also, we have local funds that we are using or will be using currently. Hopefully, the grants will be approved before we run out of the local money based on these two days. So as additional funding comes in, we can increase the number of days. We can also increase the number of teachers and the number of students that we serve. This is just to start the program, working within that parameter. We don't expect, I guess I need to choose my words carefully, too. As soon as we receive the CIG grants and as soon as everything is approved, that will, nine times out of 10, increase. And if the division needs to do anything to increase that in case there's an issue with the grant and how much money we receive for that particular initiative, then we will work towards moving that forward because we do recognize it is a priority school.
Yes.
And we have quite a few children in need of additional support.
Yes.
So yes, ma'am.
Needed to be involved in transitioning them from school into the world of work, so that was a huge part. Do so much, and the more that we expose them and the earlier we expose them, the more opportunities. Or work. The other thing I wanted to highlight was that I also attended the Gifted Administrators' Conference in Charlottesville, and the real push is for looking at individuals and how individuals are functioning and not kind of putting them all together in a group that they really do work at different paces, and how do we manage that? How do we look at that? But those are the things I would like to report today, if you have any questions or anything for me.
Thank you, Ms. Vane.
One, just one last little highlight. We do have a gifted advisory on Monday night, 5 o'clock on the 20th, and we will also have a special education advisory on the 22nd, and that is at 12 o'clock. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Vane. Ms. Wade?
Under Human Resources Management Quality Leadership for Teachers in Support, Mr. Bell and I attended the Teacher Education Advisory Committee meeting at Choone University recently to strengthen our partnership in hopes that it will, it will help our recruitment and potential recruitment efforts in the future with the Choone University graduates. I have, over the course of the last few weeks, met with all of the new teachers, spent some time with them as well as with the school principals or assistant principals to find out what assistance was needed in helping them transition or how their performance was going following the first month of school. Would you like me to go on into purpose and direction? I have been working to gather the information for the completion of the Consolidated Data Collection Report that allows us to apply for funding to support our mentor teachers for first-year teachers, and that report was submitted actually this week. Also attended the Book Buddies and Book Mice volunteer kickoff breakfast in September where we had a lot of community volunteers for the program at SP Morton, and that was, that was the time when all of the, the program was getting started, and they welcomed all of the volunteers, Book Buddies, Book Mice, to the new school year, and that was very exciting. I think that actually began this week. They started this week. I'm working to develop a division-wide student code of conduct, and I've developed a student code of conduct task force, and our first meeting was held in September. We will be meeting through the month of October to complete the student code of conduct for the division, and the goal is to have that to the school board in November for at least first reading and maybe adoption as soon as possible. But that would be something, that would be a division-wide document that would guide all of our student code of conducts at each of our individual school buildings. That's all for now?
You have other team?
Oh, yes, ma'am. That's one of, it goes with the VSBA policy that lists all of the offenses, and then we're going to have a consistent format and that lists the offenses as well as what the consequences are, and it'll be consistent across the division, and I feel like it'll be, it'll bring a lot of clarity for parents as well as for students and administrators who have to implement.
Okay. Okay. On stage, Choone, Franklin, there I am. Sure, whatever. Have you, is that what you're talking about, if you're graduating, ODU, Norfolk State, and I'll be attending a job fair, actually, November 2nd and November 12th? So, yes, we, and TeachersTeachers.com, we're following up on that daily.
Ms. Yates?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I see that I have been part of, sorry, I wasn't expecting to have to get up here to talk about these two things. I've been working very diligently with our Coordinator of Technology, the Supervisor of Maintenance, Mr. Bell, as well as representatives from ABM and the City Manager and City Finance Director to make sure that we have everything, all of our ducks in a row, everything prepared and ready to go so that we can secure the 2012 QZAP funds that we'll hope to implement soon to assure that we will get some additional capital projects completed in the next couple of years. The second item there is that I've also been working with Mr. Bell to form a partnership with American Express so that we can use their cards as almost a procurement system where we, right now, we just have a couple different cards with some vendors around here, a Walmart card, we also have a different Visa card, but we're going to be moving over into using specifically the American Express card to hopefully pay most, if not all, of our vendors, and that process will then, in turn, give us 1% back at the end of the year that we can then take and use how Mr. Bell sees it. Any questions? Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Madam Chair, fellow board members, citizens of Franklin City Public Schools, I'd like to say that for purpose and direction, we have been very busy, and as you can see, we have, please, we ask you to, please take a look, and I will say this loudly and proudly about our Franklin City Public Schools website. You will start to see new designs, and I know Mr. Spa and Mrs. Harris have been working diligently on that, and we are very proud, and it is a work in progress, so there are greater things to come. And here's a vision of that website now. A visual, excuse me. I'd like to highlight that we have Facebook and Twitter now added, Facebook and Twitter, and proud to say we have 36 likes already. Only been in about 72 hours, but we already have 36 likes, and that will be incorporated on each school's webpage as well, and that is forthcoming. Excuse me. Updated already, as technology does, 70 likes, and we are very proud of that. And you will also, we are proud to highlight the teach, our initiatives. Could you go back, Ms. Harris? Our focus. We always want to keep our focus and our division goals at the forefront of what we do here in Franklin City Public Schools. As a highlight also, we have had the pleasure of attending AVID, Pathways, and AVID stands for Advancement via Individual Determination, which is a process that prepares students, especially first college generation goers, to be ready as a 21st century learner, to be prepared for college, and that was held this past week. And we've also had the process of working with Mr. Custer. We're looking at bringing SchoolDude, which will help orchestrate facilities management efficiency and the operation within the maintenance department as it pertains to work orders and the overall expenditures that take place. And also, we are forging a partnership with that SchoolDude, and we look forward to bringing that coming forth soon. Also, we have worked with the instruction with Catapult. We've done and attended AARP training and on Standards 1 and Standard 3, and we've conducted walkthroughs, and we've completed those today. And those are some of the active things that we've been doing, and I'll entertain any questions that the board may have at this time.
Can I ask you about SchoolDude? How does that operate?
Sure. What SchoolDude does, it tracks everything we do. So when you say, let's say Mr. Custer receives a work order, and he received 20 work orders this week, and it will calculate the time it took to work, get to those work orders, it calculates when the work order was created, when the work order was closed, and it also captures every component of maintenance so that there's more accountability as we are all held accountable.
Yes, I do have a question. In reference to, did you say you went to the AVID training or workshop?
Yes, went to AVID.
Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, AVID. We attended the Pathway training. Pathway does school-wide, and one of the things that we were looking at in this process of trying to attempt to bring AVID is that it focuses on Cornell note-taking. A lot of our students, they take notes, but when you look at how students take notes, what Cornell note-taking will do is highlight the important things, asking those essential questions so that it stays at the forefront, because as a teacher is giving a lecture during independent practice, guided practice, it's going to bring to focus what those things are to focus on the SOL and also the tested content. So that's one component of AVID, the Cornell note-taking. Also, in AVID, it has a component for each specific subject area, math, science, history, social studies, where, and an AVID elected teacher is chosen where it teaches you Socratic seminar skills so that our students are efficient in the reading component as well.
Okay, I'm glad I asked that question, because I was thinking, if you said AVID, I'm thinking about the Trio Program, what AVID, okay? This is something to go with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question.
Thank you.
So no further questions? Thank you.
Since.
Since Mr. Spa is manning the video, just would like to announce to the board that we did receive the security grant in an amount of $57,770. So, thank you so much, Mr. Spa, and your work with that. And we will be looking and moving forward with more security, as well as some technology upgrades in our building. Mr. Whiting is not able to be with us tonight, so he wanted to report that we are working on some, the cafeteria plan that we needed to have some corrections with. But that is, that, those are very minor, and it doesn't affect us in any way where we are being fined or any serious consequences with it. It's just that we were citing on some things that we've already taken place to correct. One of those was basically our serving lines. So, we are already in place with that. And I believe this is a good segue to Mr. Custer. Mr. Custer will come and talk about the construction of the roof, as well as lead into our presentation from ABM on the work that they have done with the buildings.
Good evening, Board. Yes, to address your question for the CIP, we're just waiting to make sure we have this roof completed so we could address and identify any areas that may have cost more, whatever expenditures, because we're not doing a full roof replacement at High Score. He's going to do partial roofs, so we want to know exactly how much money we would have after we identified. So hopefully, we're going to have a contract out on the street next week. We're going to have a, up for bids. We have to advertise it for three days prior to. So hopefully, it'll be out on the street next week, and it's going to be tight with our deadline in November. But I just, we wanted to make sure we have this done and right before we moved on to anything else. I've been meeting with the roofing consultant this week twice. We have to identify the areas and to write up the areas that we're going to have in our contract for bids. Hope that answers your question as far as that goes. It's going to be close. I think we can get extensions, I'm not sure. But we wanted to make sure, you know, we were at the cost of the weather this year. It held us up a lot on the roof up here, and like I said, we didn't want to go any further tearing two roofs off until we had this one done. Is there any questions, is there any questions on the maintenance report? I see there's not a lot of it up there anymore. The roof is all, they've sealed it, everything. I think we went through this last rainy period, we didn't have any leaks that I was aware of. They've sealed all the roof protrusions are done. We're just waiting right now, we're waiting on the gutters. And this front part out here, they're going to change, that's one day. So they, hopefully, they have it done by, I'd say the end of the month should be done. Well, all the metal panels have been ordered and should be here next week, and all the roof gutters and downspouts and everything should be here next week. So hopefully, we'll have a complete roof here in the next two weeks. If it didn't leak yesterday, I think we're in pretty good shape. Is there any other questions on anything related to maintenance? Thank you. Oh, yes, tonight, we have our ABM team here that helped put together our last, the last project, Phase 2 of our project, which is completed. I'd like to say it's been, they did a very good job. I was really impressed with the work they had. Mr. Richard Kincaid was their project manager. I worked closely with him all summer, and it was a pleasure working with him. He's a man that gets the job done, and it was a pleasure working with ABM this time. And I'm very happy with the workmanship and the material that we got. With that, I'd like to bring them up. They have a little presentation for you.
Board members, they, ABM would like to show, give a presentation this afternoon, or this evening, to show you the work that they completed, the before, which was the ugly, and the after, which is the good. Okay? And bad was in between. Mr. Bowright?
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Mr. Bell. We do have some very compelling pictures that I think you'll be impressed with on the after. We are, I'd like to start off by saying we're happy to report that we are, as Mr. Custer said, 100% complete with the Phase 2 guaranteed energy performance contract. You know, we are proud to do our part in helping Franklin City Schools to help improve your learning environment. Our role in that was through the implementation of several building upgrades. And I'll just highlight a few of those upgrades before I turn it over to Richard Kincaid. We know a lot of your goals were to upgrade. You had older HVAC equipment that was becoming obsolete and failing, along with failing pitching equipment, areas of improving the indoor comfort along with air quality. And a big goal was to be able to fund those upgrades without having to increase taxpayer burden in doing that through your existing budget, which we're glad to say that it was able to be done without having to increase taxes or cutting any programs within the school division. And another avenue that we knew was going to be very important was to be able to make all of the upgrades without disrupting instruction. And so we're glad to say that we were able to do that. I would like to introduce Richard Kincaid now. As Mr. Custer said, he was the project manager, so he's been out here for the past 10 months, ensuring that the project was installed and implemented successfully, and that you would be happy with the results. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Richard Kincaid.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank you, Madam Chair, the members of the board, and Mr. Bell, for inviting us here this evening to share with you the great things that have happened in this school district over the last 10 months. The, there are three areas in which we did district-wide changes and upgrades. The first being the lighting upgrades, division-wide. We retrofitted existing light fixtures with new digital ballast lamps and reflector kits, relamped existing fixtures with compact fluorescents. We installed motion sensors and replaced some fixtures that could not be retrofitted. Really? There we go. Okay. As you can see in the photos, 30% less energy usage for one retrofit of a two-lamp T-12 fixture to a T-8 fixture. It's an amazing savings for one fixture. 100-watt fault incandescent. Replace that with a 23-watt compact fluorescent with a 77% less energy consumption. This happened throughout the entire district. We've replaced all exterior lights with energy-efficient LED lighting, including the parking lots, the outside plugs on the buildings. Another area we did district-wide upgrades is one that you can really see every day, and the children see it every day, is the kitchen serving lines. These old serving lines were antiquated and disrepair most of the time. I know Dan's crew had had a hard time keeping up with the repairs. They were so old and antiquated. We replaced those with energy-efficient, state-of-the-art, all stainless steel serving lines. They have built-in milk coolers, and the hot and cold wells work either way, hot or cold. And they are digital controlled. They are very, it is very good equipment. The third district-wide upgrade is the antiquated telephone systems were replaced with a new voice-over-internet protocol system. And you can thank Josh for that. At the high school, there are 134 HVAC units in that school. All of them worked off of local controls that were not very programmable. We replaced all of those controls with wireless thermostats that communicate with a centralized control system that allows for programming of schedules, set points, and monitoring from a web-based site. Dan Custer's team can monitor these and make any changes necessary, as well, I have access to it as well. It saves a lot of money in energy consumption by not operating these units in unoccupied periods. Everyone's seen the old air handlers on the gymnasium at the high school, correct? They're almost as old as I am, though. These were air conditioning systems with all-electric heat. We replaced those with two gas-packed units. They operate off of liquid petroleum gas. There's no electric heat in them, and they are extremely energy-efficient. The cafeteria HVAC had two 10-ton heat pump systems with auxiliary, I'm sorry. They had two 10-ton AC systems with all-electric heat. That electric heat is extremely expensive. We replaced those two systems with two heat pump systems, which are extremely energy-efficient. This is the shock factor. This is the shock factor. This is the domestic hot water boiler at the high school. This is an energy hall that has been taken out and replaced with what you see on the right, with two liquid petroleum gas on-demand water heaters that are super-high efficiency and use very, very little energy and very little gas. And JP King, the unit that's operating this room right now, has that catalyst control on it. This catalyst control is a helper module that allows the fan motor and all the controls to be operated only when needed. It will actually ramp the motor up and slow the motor down according to the need. So there's no need to run those continuously 24 hours a day. This also has a web-based software that allows the maintenance team and myself to monitor and control these points. The data room in the middle school has a new, energy-efficient ductless split system heat pump in the server room to increase the expected life of the IT equipment. S.P. Morton Elementary School, we installed two new heated and cooled makeup air units. These units maintain proper air quality without affecting comfort conditions in the common areas. The comfort, comfort conditions in that school, in the hallways, was uncomfortable at best. Now that you can walk the hallways in S.P. Morton Elementary School, and it is extremely comfortable, but it's also energy-efficient equipment. We replaced all of the ceiling tiles in S.P. Morton Elementary School that was in complete disrepair. The old ceiling tiles were inefficient at best. We also did repairs to any of the ceiling grids that was deteriorated. Condenser loop modifications, a lot of people won't know what that is, but we installed two-way electrically-actuated valves to each heat pump in that school, which closed the valve and shut the water off to that unit when not in use. With that, we installed two new variable frequency drives for the condenser loop pumps to minimize energy consumption. These pumps only run when needed, and they ran continuously before. This is another energy hall. This is the boiler. On the left is the electric boiler for the condenser loop at S.P. Morton. We replaced that with a LP gas boiler that is super-high efficiency. In summary, we completed this project on time and on budget. We offered no change orders to the school district, and we're very proud of that. No disruptions to the learning environment, and the project was designed and implemented as planned. I would personally like to thank the board, the school district, for allowing us to come here and show you these results. I would also like to thank Gail Wade and Reginald Yates for all their tremendous help throughout this process. And last but not least, Dan Custer. He's not only been instrumental in developing this program with us, but has been a great partner throughout. Thank you very much.
We thank you all, because when you talked about it, we didn't think that probably would be possible because of the magnitude that was projected. And you have really almost perfected our buildings. They look so good. I was over at S.P. Morton during the summer. I've been to Franklin High School. I haven't been in JP King, but I'll get there. But you've done an outstanding job, and we really appreciate it. And this is truly an indication of a picture being worth more than 1,000 words. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bell, and thank you, staff, for your wonderful report and reflection on the awesome work that you have done thus far this year. I did ask Mr. Bell to ask you to sit down front, and you've done it tonight. You've been accessible when it comes to making comments and expressing your views. When we return to City Hall, I'm hoping that you will also have designated spaces down front. You have graduated and moved down front to the top of the class, and we appreciate that.
Tough as the time.
It is. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Yes, Mr. Counselor, if you wanted to.
You know, we laymen of the lot, whether we wanted to do this project, whether we wanted you to do this project. And I'm here to tell you, thank you. You've done a great job. Mr. Custer has said over and over again, he has nothing good thing to say about you.
And we do have Ms. Kat, David, our CAO, with us this evening. And at this time, would you like to give some perspective relative to what we are accomplishing? And she is from the Virginia Department of Education.
I am. Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me, Ms. King. And good evening, Ms. King, Council, members of the school board, Mr. Bell, guests, staff, administrators, principals. I am delighted to be back in Franklin City and to be with you tonight. I need to let you know that I spent an incredible morning at S.P. Morton Elementary School, observing in classroom instruction with Mr. Bell, Dr. Smith, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Oakley, and of course, Mr. Chandler. And before I do anything else, I have to give a shout-out to the teachers and the students whose classrooms we've visited, especially for their patience and perseverance. It is not easy to keep on keeping on when six school administrators walk into your classroom with iPads, laptops, notebooks, and are taking notes on every single thing they see. But they did keep on keeping on, and they stayed focused on instruction, students and teachers. And I'm not here to give a total report tonight, but just let me say that S.P. Morton is a whole new school from the S.P. Morton I visited about 10 months ago for the first time. The climate of high expectations and a spirit that all things are possible is palpable in that school. And I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves. There's a lot of work to be done between now and then. But S.P. Morton is definitely moving on a positive path, and I commend everyone that's involved to a great start to this school year. Now, they may not have won the teacher attendance award. They may not have won the student attendance award, but Mr. Chandler, you get my award. Don't get that attendance thing next month. And I would also like to congratulate the Superintendent's Advisory Council. I am glad that I did not have to immediately follow Ms. Hairston in my presentation, and I'm even happier that I didn't have to follow Ms. Hilliard. It was a great presentation, a great summary, evidence of the work that they have done is right there in the plan. So I was very encouraged this morning when I left S.P. Morton. I was even more encouraged tonight when I heard the stakeholders group, the work that they're doing, the work that has been done. And I bonded with Ms. Hairston. We are making some edits. My role is to make sure that this corrective action plan moves forward from you. My role is to make sure that this corrective action plan moves forward from you to the Virginia Board of Education. Everybody's holding hands and says, "Do it. Let's do it." It's great. So a couple edits, Mr. Bell and I met today, that we need to put in. Your suggestion, Ms. King, was right on target. Mr. Bell and I had talked about that earlier today. So we're going to get that for you so you can get that final vote of approval and move it forward to the Virginia Board of Education. Very briefly, because I know the hour is late, but Ms. King called me, thank you very much, and asked me to give a little update on, you know, what does that woman from the BDOE do? And I'm happy to give you that information. As you know, I was appointed by the Virginia Department of Education to serve as the superintendent of public instruction, Dr. Staples designee here. And specifically to see that the memorandum of understanding and that corrective action plan that we're working together to make sure, basically to work me out of a job and I'll be happy to do that, but to make sure that all of those stipulations are followed. My responsibilities are to provide administrative oversight over processes and procedures and strategies that are implemented in support of the MOU. And I'm a strict constructionist of the MOU that's in there. It's part of my responsibilities to make sure that it's followed, but nothing else. You have a superintendent. I'm not in town to run your school division. You have a superintendent and you all are doing that. So my work is strictly about that MOU and that corrective action plan. I share feedback with the division superintendent and the Franklin City School Board, which is what I'm doing tonight, and answer questions and provide clarification, which I've done in past opportunities. I do provide oversight, working with the consultant, Dr. Landham, on human resource issues, ensuring that the instructional personnel are appropriately credentialed. We're not here to select your personnel or to hire your personnel. We're here to see that they're all appropriately credentialed. And I'll get to that in a minute, but as some of you may or may not know, Dr. Landham has some significant health issues and he is not able, he's on a leave of absence, he's not able to continue. And so I've been working with Ms. Wade and Dr. Mark Allen and Patty Pitts from the Virginia Board, Virginia Department of Education, to develop a new process to streamline how quickly we can respond when you have an applicant that you're ready to hire to make sure those credentials are in place. Additionally, my role is to approve all federal funding regarding school improvement funds for Title I, the consolidated application, prior to being submitted for reimbursement to the Virginia Department of Education. So I've been working with Rachel Yates, Dr. Smith, pretty much the first two rows here, that when there's a purchase that they want to make before we get to the purchase order or hire and file for reimbursement and say, "Oh, no, you can't do that," that before we even hire or submit that purchase order, we know that it's okay to use school improvement grant funding or Title I funding for that. Finally, I work closely with the school and division personnel to implement instruction that is aligned to the standards of learning. And I report monthly to the superintendent of public instruction and the Office of School Improvement on the steps that Franklin City Public Schools have been taking to meet and satisfy those essential actions. So that's my responsibility to what I've been doing to do that. And as a point of reference, I'm usually here on-site between six to eight days a month. Been averaging about seven, usually every other week. And sometimes I see this wonderful staff when I'm doing training, that they mentioned before, the ARC training, which stands for Aligning Academic Review and Performance Evaluation. It has nothing to do with the organization, I understand, since Mr. Chandler's parents a magazine every month, ARC. As someone who's been receiving that magazine for 14 years, we had to get that straight. So some of the things I've done, I have done, I'm collaborating with Dr. Smith on professional development, on teacher, on the new teacher orientation, on the August pre-service to make sure the professional development that is required in the essential actions is implemented. I actually was able to co-facilitate the three staffs of your three schools with the three principals on some required professional development. So we were a one-two act in August in doing that professional development, which I really enjoyed doing. They'll probably tell you otherwise, but we enjoyed doing it. Didn't we enjoy doing it? Yes, okay. And the teachers cooperated, and they were good students. And I have to say, Franklin High School, we were Friday at 2:00 in August doing professional development and they really hung in there and participated, particularly in the Jeopardy game. I have facilitated training on that Aligning Academic Review with Performance Evaluation and that is why we were doing the walkthroughs today, to observe instruction as a follow-through of that professional development. And if you look at the corrective action plan, many of the essential actions are not only to have the professional development, but to follow through and make sure it's implemented in the classrooms. I have worked with Mr. Bell on the creation of a standard template for the division curriculum guides. Mr. Bell has a lot of experience in curriculum development and as does Ms. Hairston. My role is to make sure that the guide conforms with the Virginia Department of Education Academic Review Evaluation Tool, which it does. The same thing was done with the lesson planning template. Mr. Bell brought a template he wanted to use that he's been successful with. We tweaked it a little bit to make sure that it aligns with the academic review evaluation tool. So the next time the Virginia Department of Education looks at that, they'll say, "Check. Check. No more essential actions." I have completed the follow-up academic review reports for the division in all three schools and then those essential actions are now embedded under that 1.0 section of the corrective action plan. Human resources, we talked about working with Ms. Wade to review and revise specific policies and those are corrective actions that we can now say, "Check. The school board has revised that policy," specifically on staff hiring procedures, on supplemental duties, which came up tonight. And that essential action is only about teachers being paid for supplemental duties, but in a small school division, you're exactly right. Teachers do three, four, five supplemental duties in addition to providing solid instruction in the classroom. So the goal of that was to make sure that in doing all those duties, student performance doesn't suffer or teaching responsibilities don't suffer. If you revised your policy, that's a check, completed. And then the sign-on bonuses, if you revised that policy. So that's an essential action, completed. I've worked with Dr. Smith and the building principals to identify what we call universal screeners, the measures of academic progress in WA. The teachers and the staffs at the schools last year did not like the tool we were using. They didn't find it useful. We were able to use SIG money, school improvement grant money, to identify and purchase a new universal screener, which I think you've probably heard about in some of Dr. Smith's And now we're working on instructional interventions and not only the after-school tutorial, but also particularly at the middle school. We thought that the, even though great strides were made at the middle school in performance, the teachers and the ministry of staff didn't think our computer programs that we were using for instructional interventions were getting the gains we should and they weren't necessarily appropriate for middle school students. You've got to motivate a middle schooler. And when this particular program, we thought was a little juvenile in its context and as indicated by kids saying, "Do I have to do this again?" So we're looking at better ways to provide those instructional interventions. Certainly I've worked with, I mean, talked about the grants, I won't say that again. I serve as a liaison between basically Franklin City Public Schools and the Office of School Improvement. You asked the question about Ms. Oakley. There is a team of technical assistance providers from the Virginia Department of Education. I coordinate their work myself. It's Ms. Oakley who just retired from Richmond Public Schools as deputy superintendent, has a wealth of experience in school leadership and she's providing leadership coaching to the two principals and probably spent equal time, but I think a little bit more time in the elementary schools since Mr. Chandler's new-toelementary perspective and helping him look at some of the issues that are different and a different animal at the elementary school. And then of course, Dr. Landham, who I'm sorry to say is not going to be working with us for the near future. Work with Catapult to make sure that their services align with what is in the corrective action plan and what those evaluation tools are from the Virginia Department of Education. And finally, I'm just pleased to say that I did a significant amount of collaboration with Mr. Bell. We have been working on, and I meant to bring it up with me, there's another update document for the Virginia Department of Education for everything we have done just in July and August to meet essential action by essential action. Everything that's been done, it's up to 40 pages. I mean, it's, this man's tired, or should be tired. So I shouldn't make it say what I've done, but my role is to take the essential action and report specifically what's been done beneath that. And a lot's been done in July and August and we start work next week on a report for what's been done in September and October. I do provide a written report to Dr. Staples every month of my activities in Franklin. I am happy to provide that report to you as well. And of course, I have the privilege of attending school board meetings as many times as I can and be in town and provide you with any answers or clarification to my role and what's happening here. But we've established a very collaborative relationship and like I said, I'm in town six to eight days a month. I am on-call 24/7. So we respond a lot by email, phone calls, text messages to get the job done. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for Mr. David? We do appreciate your presence in our school division. And I said CAO, and for the public, that's the Chief Academic Officer from the Virginia Department of Education and we do appreciate all that you do for us. And I do have one question.
What's that?
And I don't even, I regret having to ask it, but I want to ask it in relation to dollars and cents.
Yes.
At our meeting on Tuesday night with Catapult, I observed that there were three persons there listed for JP King. And JP King's school improvement program started. We had three people on the ground in the building. SP Morton is larger and we have two people on the ground in the building. And I felt somewhat, made a sympathetic for Mrs. Gurley, who came up and said that she's going between, I think, SP Morton and JP King someday. With SP Morton having the large student body that it has and with that then necessitating a larger staff, and I know that our contract with Catapult for SP Morton does not look like probably what we signed for JP King. So I'm asking, Mrs. David, is there any money anywhere such that we can get a third person at SP Morton through the Virginia Department of Education who will manage that leadership component that does not currently exist?
The way I'll explain that to you, because they are separate contracts and for JP King it is a, what's the term they use, a scale, step down. It's their third year, step down. The good news is JP King is on target to exit priority school. They just keep on keeping on a little bit more and they will exit. And I don't want to embarrass anybody, but of all the priority schools in the Commonwealth, there are a very small number who are really in year three but are really poised to exit that. So that's just push them over the finish line to exit priority status. Now, the state accountability, which is accreditation, is another, you know, in Virginia, we are so fortunate that we have two accountability systems for every school. So that's a contract that's been negotiated and it's paid for through the school improvement grants. JP King exits, the school improvement grant is not there next year. So JP King is one source. SP Morton is in a totally separate contract and they're really getting more than double the services that JP King is getting. If we wanted, because they have two people on the ground five days a week. Now, when Ms. Gurley round goes to JP King, it's only two days a month that she goes and they send a substitute in to SP Morton. So it looks like two people versus three people. It's really the amount of time to have two people 40 hours a week is pretty significant. The leadership component that has been provided by Mr. Porter and which is being scaled back, he's only at JP King three days a month this year, correct? The leadership component and that coaching is now being provided by Ms. Oakley. And that's, she's been the direct leadership coach and she's there three days a week with you, two to three days a week. So you're getting a lot of support for leadership coaching. But any, I have nothing to do with the contract negotiation. So there are clauses, I do have copies of the contract if we want to initiate any changes to that contract, but that would certainly go through Mr. Bell.
I was concerned about the people there. We have a massive situation to head at SP Morton and to ensure we're getting, that was off my cover.
Right.
Based on what I observed there.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. For action to approve minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Concerning September 18th board meeting, I was not present for that meeting, but I see I made a motion and I approved that motion. We need to make corrections to that.
That was the 18th?
Yes.
How long? Do you want to take these separately, September 9th?
No, because I want to.
So then let's take these separately, all right? So is there a motion for approval of September 9th, 2014?
No. I'd like to approve the call board meeting for September 9th, 2014.
Is the property moved as second that we approved the minutes or got the minutes for September 9th, 2014? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, minutes have been adopted. School board meeting minutes for September 8th. Do we have any abstentions on, all right, so our abstain, all right, September 18th? Could you, if you're going to abstain, you can say, "I abstain," for the vote, all right? At the end, all right? School board meeting minutes, September 9th, 18th. Now I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for the school board meeting minutes of September 18th, 2014.
Be approved. The property moved as second that we approved the minutes of September 18th, 2014.
With the changes made.
With the changes made, yes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there any?
Abstain.
All right, abstain. Minutes of call school board meeting, September 30th, 2014. I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 30th, 2014.
I abstain.
All right. The property moved as second that we approved the minutes of September 30th, 2014. There were corrections in that, but no.
I wasn't there, so I abstained.
Okay, you abstained, all right, good. All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one, two abstentions, all right, so Walton and Austin abstain. New business, authorization to request appropriation. Oh, that's right. All right. I'm sorry. Action to approve bills for payment. Thank you. Action to approve bills for payment.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the September vouchers for payment.
I second.
The property moved as second that we approved the deals for payment through affirmative action on vouchers. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion is canceled. New business, is that next? All right. Authorization to request appropriation.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request to increase
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request to increase fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen school budget by twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for the grant awards notification for National Lunch Equipment Assistant Grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
The property moved as second, that we approved the request to increase the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, fifteen school budget by twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Further grant awards notification for National Lunch Equipment Assistant Grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Is there any discussion? All in? It just said something about the school education program in my, that's what I saw somewhere in the, uh, school equipment. Would you like for Mr. Davis to bring back to you? Yeah, yeah. All right. Okay, so let's ask that we, ask him to bring back an itemized listing of how the money is going to be used, is that all right? And I believe that when he submitted that grant that he shared for us last year, and we probably forgot, I think that we approved that, but that's okay. All right. Yes, ask him to bring, but I would hope that we would go on and accept the appropriations. Yeah. Right. Yes, Mr. Davis.
Would it be available for me to give him to sit after he, you know?
That would be great, too. That would be great. So, with a motion is in order to at least amend our budget. Okay, so second?
Not second.
Is the property moved as second, that we approved appropriation of these funds from this grant award? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is clear. And there have been several grants acquired this, for this year. Would you please congratulate staff for going out and getting money and funds to supplement initiatives across our division? Again, we talk about how small our staff is, but yet I think Mr. Edwards, there was something in here tonight about you. We really appreciate that. Thank you all so very much. Any other questions?
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Uh, the QZAB resolution, Mr. Bell?
Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight we are bringing forward the QZAB resolution where we have the opportunity to ask city council to approve funds in the amount of one point eight million dollars, actually one million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. In, at your spaces, you see where I have provided you with frequently asked questions about QZAB, Qualified Zone Academy Bond. And the way that we receive this bond, we are one of three divisions that right now have the opportunity to, to access this money. Us, Richmond City Public Schools, and Petersburg City Public Schools. If we, if the school board at your will do not want to move forward, then that money will be turned back in, and then the fourth person, the fourth division on the list will receive those funds. We qualify because we have a free reduced population above thirty-five percent. We can use these funds to renovate and repair public school buildings, invest in equipment, maintenance purchases, technology, develop challenging curricula, or train quality staff. Also, within this QZAB bond, we have to have a private entity who is willing to provide ten percent, to give us ten percent upfront, which will be added on to the one point eight million dollars. ABM is willing, they, they have accepted and taken on and are willing to work with Franklin City Public Schools to address that match. At this time, where we are right now, Mr. Yates, Mr. Costa, Mr. Spa, myself, as well as city manager, Mr. Martin, have been working collaboratively, discussing assets of what we would do with these bonds, what we'd do with the monies, how we would assess that, how we would use it in our school system. And, and then having conversations with the city manager about the debt that the city will look at taking. We will discuss based on the passing of the resolution from the board, because that is the very first thing that must occur. If we are willing to move forward to assess these funds, then we can have conversations with the city on Monday in a short session to talk about other aspects as we get a little bit deeper into conversations. But tonight, the resolution is before you, and it speaks of us as a school board, as a school district, being willing to accept, to take on this amount of money to improve our infrastructure as it pertains to maintenance equipment and technology, as that's what we are looking at primarily right now.
Can you use these, can you use these funds, you know, Ms. King, we talked a few years back with the city council about doing away with the trailers of S.P. Morton and adding some more classroom space there?
Yes, sir.
Is it, can we use some of this for that, or?
We could, but right now, we are possibly in line to receive another QZAB funding, and the amount that we have right now will only take, will not take care of that project. We've had Mr. Costa to look at the project of the modules, and right now, that's around a three point five to three point seven million dollar project. So, but hopefully, we have, and what we have received, word that we possibly may be considered at the end of this month, or first of November, with a four million dollar QZAB. And that's where we've been in talks with Mr. Martin as well.
Let me ask another question.
Yes, sir.
I don't understand exactly what we're dealing with. We just, we just took out a two million dollar debt by ABM to do that work. That's right for Yates, right? Somewhere in that neighborhood. It's one point eight million dollars. Who, who, who can be responsible for that debt?
The city.
The city.
The city. If we pass the resolution, then we, and then we have talks with the city, the city. No, sir, no, sir.
Mr. Bell, I have a question. You mentioned two. Are we, would we be eligible for two? Because you said late on the four million.
Right now, we, we have received word that we may be eligible for the two, for the second. But right now, we know we are eligible for this one. We just have to see if we want to move forward with that. Yes, ma'am.
With all of the energy savings that we heard earlier tonight, when it comes to our ABM, I would think that that project is almost paying for itself. We have, our energy reduction should actually be almost taken care of that, should it not? Or is it?
I think it's doing.
That's it. But those additional, I mean, we, we always in the past had that to happen. And additional energy savings that we presented tonight, I tell you, I don't see how we could lose on that. But then get into this money, and Mr. Counsel's question about how arm to replace those mobile units at S.P. Morton. Is there any way, I, I, I'm not saying buy new mobile units, but is there any way to put a one, you know, piece like you see at our Virginia School Board Association convention, you see some of those models there? And it's just like a one big unit like your, like the gym almost?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
That prefab?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is that true, here you know?
Yes, ma'am. We looked in, we did the research. Mr. Costa presented us with a metal building, that one unit that you're speaking of, three point five million minimum. That's, and that's last week's price.
Because I just see that as a part of it.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Put what you project in, Mr. Bell, and document the need for the one million pounds.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we have a wish list that Mr. Costa has drafted, which will continue to take care of a lot of the old equipment that we have that will move us into the twenty-first century. Talking with Mr. Spa, our technology, we still have some upgrades that are needed, especially with cameras. We're looking at a one-to-one initiative with our students on the instructional side. Some other technology upgrades, as Promethean boards in every classroom, things of that nature. So, we have a list that would definitely cover one point eight easy. Really need more than that, but, but one point eight easy. Yes, ma'am.
Are there other questions?
I just noticed when we approached the city with this, and I understand Mr. Martin already had a conversation with you and the rest of it. You have to, the other city council members, you're going to have to show the need, you know what I'm saying? You've got to prove you need money. They're just not going to come up and say, here's one point eight million dollars, do good with what you plead, because all of us here know, for them to give us, or anybody, one point eight million dollars, something else has to happen. They got to raise taxes or something. They're just not sitting there, you know, for you to have. So, you know, we really got to show the need, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir. I believe we can show it.
But when we look at the demands, school improvement, essential actions, and what we have to take, the program of instruction in cities, and what we anticipate happening is outside, and we know that we have an inadequate technology infrastructure, you know, that we hear every month on that. And then when we look at our builders and the age, if we don't do something, then they're going to trouble it out. And I see this, and maybe some more funds that we can use to upgrade and change our budget.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. And, yes, ma'am. And what we would do after this, after the resolution, depending on board approval, we can email your work with the wish list prior to Monday, so you can kind of see some of the, the things that we really do need. And we have a list compiled by every school, and also, we've included Charles Street Gym, because it's in desperate need of a roof. And we have, I know, three groups that are working in that building, or participating in that building almost every night. Our robotics, our cheerleaders, wrestling team, and anybody else that really wants to use that facility. Upgrade until we can do battle.
So, with this being, whether there's more other questions, with this being a resolution, what are your actions? We need a motion to approve?
You don't, you don't, you don't get anything you don't ask for.
That's right.
So, Madam Chairman? What, what, is this, the top of the resolution, is that a motion?
Approve the QZAB. And may I ask, Mr. Martin, you're the city manager, did you want to speak to this at Yeah, please come forth.
I don't have a presentation, but I'm here as a, to listen. I told the superintendent I would attend. Our finance director and I have been working with our bond counsel and also our financial advisor, Davenport, that assisted with his previous finances the city's done. Try to have a plan that's workable and to see if the deadlines can be met, because superintendent, I think you mentioned this, but I want to be sure the board understands the board emphasis to the city council. This window's closing. If it's not completed by December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, these monies will be gone. As you mentioned, it'll go on to the next priority. So, this is a one-time shot, this pale end of it, that's unfortunate. It would've been nice had it published four times or worked this. I congratulate the superintendent for bringing it up at this late hour, because he knew the gravity of it, that when the closing, and these are truly the needs of the school system, they're going to need to be funded. This is basically what I informed him from my perspective, over the next few years, or whenever the school board could afford to do them within their budget. I hope it be this, would be things that could be taken care of, and the debt service could be less, and the impact on the operating budget over a number of years to repair these things and other cost efficiency savings, that's just like your ABM project is already realizing. But this, this obviously isn't a fix-all, solve-all. We did discuss very extensively the classroom replacement project that's in the C I D that the school board put in last couple of years. But realistically, I don't think you could have that project ready in sixty days, fully vetted, a solid number with an architect, that we can't, because we don't. So, that would have to be dealt with, and given the fact that it probably would exceed the one point eight million, whatever you came up with, I think the next practical option is to look for future funding for that, and that's QZAB or whatever that may be. The only other comment I'd make is the city council members collectively have not, are not aware of this, have discussed it. One of my purposes in being here is to listen. I'm going to shoot out an email then tomorrow to make them aware that this will be presented on Monday, if the board approves it. If, if, if so, then the city council will discuss it. Schedule will not call for any action on Monday by either body at this point. We will have our financial revisers there to inform the city council as well as the school board of the impact on the city's debt structure and our total indebtedness and what this could do, and some options for financing that would fit different debt service amounts and give us some impact on the city taxpayers, obviously, and the total budget. We will have that information available for. The next step would require city council's public hearing and action as a substance of needing if they decide to afford, and I'd like to do this first, if under the need and intention, if I was called. So, that just gives you a glimpse of what would be necessary, but it's an aggressive schedule, but it's an opportunity to access low or no interest loan funds that doesn't come around all the time. It's something I think you'd be with this, we at least discussed. I applaud the superintendent for bringing it to your attention on this type of time frame. It's a good thing we already had the need schedule.
And so all the money, finish questions.
That's close, that's close on the bottom. Yeah, the borrowing would have to be completed by the end of the calendar. But it can be done, and I was going to get out a limb if the city attorney saw me off. Uh, it will be done if the city council proves that, uh, we can be accomplished and we engage the proper technical assistance from bond counsel and, uh, financial advisor. It can be done, will be done by the city council, if qualified for the money, if both bodies agree to go forward. And, but I think the comment earlier is right on target. My last one would be, I think you will have to convince the city council, particularly on this short timeframe. Uh, so, so I hope the citizens to be well-prepared, especially can be in the short run of time with super, with staff, and have put this plan together of the need, of need, of need. Things gotta do, and, uh, they'll act accordingly. I'll answer your question.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If there's no more questions, I, I, I will make a motion to accept the Q S A B resolution.
And I second.
Is there any discussion? I do have one question. I don't believe that, I believe that this would be paid back at zero interest rate.
As I understand it, that will be determined by the, the bond, uh, folks, uh, it'll be low or no, is the way they say it, uh, somewhere between zero and whatever the, the market requires. Now, Rachel may have some additions, maybe.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I oppose.
Right, uh, crisis.
Okay, can I say, thank you, A B M, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, board members, the crisis plan is presented to you for approval. You know, the crisis plan does not require a first and second reading, because you, school divisions, that's has, that's a mandate. It has to be, um, part of division policy and procedures anyway. So we have completed and made our updates and revised our crisis plan to be prepared for all incidents. So at this time, we are asking for approval of the crisis plan for F Y I 1415.
Are there any questions on the crisis plan? We, uh, adopted one last year, I think, well, that's the question, we did it for all of the schools, previous, uh, that had, uh, each school had its own plan, and then we combined it, which was really great, wonderful. So, does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment, it's, it's fine. I'm just wondering, you know, we, we wrote the correct back plan, we wrote it so people could read it. I'm wondering, is that absolutely so further, um, updating the plan and stuff, right, so we're normal people to read them, you know what I mean? It's very difficult to read. You know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, just something similar, I mean, why not? You know, because your parents read this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, you know, it would be nice in the future as we're updating our, our different plans, that it be written in, not.
And that's a good suggestion. And I suppose at the building principals and meeting with your parents, your P T As, do you review these, review the crisis plan? Do you don't ever do that? You don't make them aware of it. You do it with the teachers, with the teachers. All right. Okay, so teachers and staff, not the parents.
There are a lot of exaggerations through yours, you student, first week of school, with your class, with your.
So then that's where the simplicity and simplified explanation, yeah, to the faculty and to the students, yes. Yeah, I do, you understand that. All right. So, uh, we need a motion to approve.
I second.
Poppy moved in second, that we approved the 2014-15 crisis plan. We regret the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the crisis plan. First reading, final approval policy, K B R.
Madam Chair, board members, we have before you file K B dash R, which is a revision of the reverse 911 message. That principals, as well as the division, can alert parents, community, and students. Uh, we hope that by being short, that we could have a first and final that you approve.
Why do the school principals need to have a proof? Says that school principals may send messages after approval. Why don't they even?
Uh, well, Mr. Counsel, I'm, I'm, I would say this is adequately, uh, not our group of principals. Now, I trust our group of principals, but I have been in, in our division, in our division, in some divisions, where you need to check that message. Because it can go out and it can cause an uproar versus someone just having F Y I and being alerted to some things. So, not our principals. Now, I trust our principals, because they're not gonna send out anything that's crazy. But I have been in a division where you had to kind of check behind some principals, and just to have a safety net. We just instituted that. Now, our principals have sent out some 911s. They send me a quick text or send me a quick email. I read it, or they send it to Mr. Edwards or Dr. Smith or Mrs. Wade, and it's fine. I trust our, but we, we would just want to have a safety net. Yes, sir.
And I do hope that it's almost for everything. I hope that the principals approve communication within the building. While we're taking Mr. Bell to the dry and dry, boy, I have seen people having to put out fires because things have been miscommunicated. And the principals need to know those things, messages that are going out.
Well, I agree, they're, that, for, for the people, that they're responsible for their building, they should, they should have, you know, know what they're putting on.
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Williams.
I would suggest just one little language change in the third paragraph, the school principal's making a mess of this town. After approval, you don't designate who the approval comes from. I assume that it's the approval of the superintendent, but I would recommend that you would add, who this action is making the approval. Arguably, it could have been stated, um, that it would be the approval of school board. I think you need to identify who's giving the approval to.
What we need to add, that, uh, Mr. Williams, even though we had it in the first paragraph?
I've let it up there, and I thought about that, and I think the health prevention's worth the pound of cure.
Another safety net.
And when you're doing a first and second reading all at one time, then, uh, my suggestion would to be, board agrees, with, to be amended, if the board says it's not necessary, that's fine, I'm over it. Um, just a recommendation.
We said that it could be either a report here or a document. In other words, this will be read after approval of the superintendent or designated right.
And actually, to be consistent, we have designated representatives, so we could keep that consistent with the third paragraph, it's very, designated representative.
And is there a motion to approve with amended? The poppy moved in second, that we approve consecrating aura as amended. You heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose motion to carry. Right, um, unfinished business? We have a second reading, final approval of policy J F C R with revised.
Ms. Wade?
Um, we're filed J F C R, standards of student conduct. This was presented for first reading at the September board meeting. Uh, with the additions of the, um, uniform policy included under the dress code. And I believe, um, I was not here, but I believe that, um, the comments, um, made were regarding page five. Under attendance and truancy, the request was to have more clarification about our procedures, um, about what we do. And so you'll see the highlighted, underlined additions there on page five to address, uh, hopefully, what some of the concerns were. So if this meets the board approval, then we're, we're, we're asking this as second reading and asking for approval tonight. According to our procedures, this is, this is our procedure, and this is our board policy on attendance and truancy. I pulled it directly.
That, that doesn't go on the truancy report in terms of being recognizable as a moving forward to court, no, ma'am?
It's just a preventive, it's being proactive and trying to stress the importance, because, um, you know, it states that if you miss 10 days, then you run the risk of failing your course. So it's just trying to keep parents involved and keeping their students.
That is correct. And most of the time, Ms. Darwin, that, that is prevalent at the high school level. Because sometimes a kid will sign a parent's name, and the parent will never know that they missed three days or four days or whatever. So that's a safety net.
The, um, are you talking about in?
N B.
In B?
Two B, an unofficial summons for a quiet meeting to be held in juvenile and domestic courts.
This is if a student has received six absences, then, um, our attendance officer does involve the, uh, juvenile court system and the truancy. That person sits on the part of our truancy review team. And so the unofficial summons comes from the juvenile and domestic courts. Um, simply to reinforce the compulsory attendance law and what would happen if, um, a petition was to be filed.
So does that mean if the summons sent to the person at home by, or it's taken by, make a policeman? It doesn't mean that?
No, no, it's not. It's an unofficial summons. No, this is not a summons from the police officer. It's an unofficial summons that's sent out by our attendance officer.
So then it comes from my center, unofficial.
Yes. All of that is our communication.
So when it becomes severe?
Yes.
Who takes the summon?
Then the police officer division, that's right, for the official summons. Unofficial.
Is there any other question? And thank you for the deal. This was dealt with in the last general assembly, wasn't it? Some of this came out of change in legislation, did it not?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that of, uh, the, the parents, involved, doing something with the parents, uh, instituted procedures. Procedures against the parents for bonding. Yes, I see. Motion is approved.
Make a motion that we approve policy J F C R revised.
Mr. Poppy moved in second, that we approve policy J F C R as revised. You heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, the motion is carried. Right, business, that's school board members, we're getting there. Anybody has any business, any concerns or issues, any kind?
I'd just like to say, I think the collaboration is really great between the, the schools, the community, or the ones working together. And I think that presentation, uh, the building, and I saw this, uh, council smiled. I thought that just was like the icing on the cake.
So would you please note that in our minutes, that content, because that can be spread across the minutes as a statement of appreciation. I think for all of the people that have that, and, and, and. I do have one further, uh, item, and that is the superintendent's performance evaluation system. They were passed out at our Tuesday evening meeting, and I hope that you've looked at it, because we do need to move with asking Mr. Bell to set goals for evaluation. So, but I'd like to add, this evening, there's one major correction. And let me start, I've continued to note that if you looked at it, you asked us in the summative report to combine option A and option B. I'm looking for the page, and that's gonna be page 48. On page 48, you have superintendent summative performance report. I'd like for you to take the word sample off. I'm going to, I've talked to, um, Mrs. Kendrick about that correction. This is now official if we adopt it. It's no longer a sample, because we combined option A and option B. And then take the word option A off at the very end. You have samples, and that's going to read as a heading, superintendent summative performance report. All right? And that's the correction. And, uh, as you applaud, um, Mrs. Kendrick's efficiency in getting this done for us. Uh, I took the document to her, and she did, I mean, it's a lot of work to get this team board after, I put together what you wanted to have included. So I thank you for that, Mrs. Kendrick. So at this time, I'd like for you to adopt, a motion to adopt, uh, this. It has the top, and here's, we need to delineate. Evaluation system, uh, you've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in? Yes.
As amended?
As amended, as, with the correction, with the correction, with the correction. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, hearing none, it has been adopted. Now, Mr. Bell, the writing of the goal, he said that he would ask him to write two goals for 2014-15. Goal number one would relate to indicators one through six, and goal number two would relate to number seven. And, uh, would you like to have a meeting for these to be presented, discussed with us, and we need to do it as early as possible? Or would you like to have him to bring it to our second Tuesday meeting? Second Tuesday of November, Mr. Bell will present to us his goal. We've done have to work on, we say, indicators one through six, and then indicator seven. We have done the work for him. Mr. Bell can easily put that together, right?
I have one thing. This, Mr. Bill, Mr. Bill, I, I.
Mr. Bell, I have, uh, heard and understand that's been some new football players added in the middle of the nine years. How can that happen?
Based on the policy of the two-point-oh, the Franklin City Public School policy has two stipulations. One where the athlete, student athlete, has to be eligible for Virginia High School League. And then also, we look at the two-point-oh rule. Now, with the student athletes in football, volleyball, as well as we had a few band members, am I correct, Mr. Phelps? Was it a band member? Wasn't band member, but I know it was volleyball and football. The students were eligible by Virginia High School League. Looking at the two-point-oh rule, the superintendent can designate some type of document or way to amend or to get them to perform at a level to be eligible. Talking with Mr. Phelps and the A.D., we placed those students on a contract because they were eligible for Virginia High School League. And in the policy, it gives them, I think, two, it's two times that they get to, they may get, make a waiver. Right. So, in that waiver, they, we created a contract, where Mr. Phelps and his team created a contract where those students could not participate unless they had a two-point-oh or better by the end of the first. There were five football players that I think were eligible, but only two of them met six, but, and two of them, two fulfilled the terms. And out of the volleyball, there were two for two. Out of the si, out of the six, only two, only two fulfilled the contract.
Let me ask some questions. If they fall below the two-point-oh, what happens at any point?
Then they will automatically be ineligible again because it not only holds them to that four and a half week, but it holds them to the nine weeks, the semester, and the rest of the year. So, they know they have to keep their marks up where they need to be.
Another question. Have those students already used the two waivers?
No, neither one of them ever used a waiver. No, no.
Don't take this too long, man. Why, why would they not lie to use the waivers before you put them on contract?
Why was this their first time?
Yeah, why didn't they just use the waiver to play instead of, you know, if they got two waivers to play, how come they didn't use the waivers to get them?
I don't know why they didn't use it, but they had the waiver, I'm trying to, trying to gather exactly what you're saying.
You have two waivers. If you fall below two-point-oh, you can request the waiver and be able to play. Am I correct?
If I can answer the question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You understand what I'm trying to say? Why would they not use the waiver?
Question, what was it, KB? I mean, the two, the two that are now playing. Do we know who you? It was the low.
But now they are way over two-point-oh.
But now they're above. I'm trying to make sure I hear.
They had, they, that was, they had to fulfill the con, and then there were some other things within the contract that Mr. Phelps and his team, it wasn't just grades. They had to attend study hall and some other things that, no disciplines, those things that they had within the contract. And not only did the student sign it, but the parent signed it as well.
Okay, I mean, this is the first time I've known it happened in the building in nine weeks, and I'm just.
Did we get Virginia High School League approval?
Don't have to.
That's not our policy. Our policy goes by the end of the previous semester. That's what our policy is saying. So, I'm wondering if we entering into a contract, if that's changed the policy.
Can we re?
I mean.
We need to take.
I know, it, it was in the previous semester. No, we didn't change the policy. The policy is still intact. However, at the bottom of that policy, the superintendent has the right to create some type of way that the child can be eligible if, if, as, and what I did, I collaborated with the principal, with the A.D. before we even moved forward. But at that bottom, it does say that the principal has the right to take a look at that. I mean, the superintendent can make exceptions, and that's correct.
But I'd like to say, but it still states, but if it says the superintendent can. But we can't go back with these two.
You need to have your, and, and we are saying that it's two-point-oh, and that's what we need to stand by, we need to stand by that.
Well, and Ms. Walton, I think we, that's another discussion because as what I believe in as a former coach, what are we doing with the kid that is not trying to do extra for his building or for himself? So, we are not penalizing the other kid that gets on the bus every day that is doing below two-point-oh. So, what are we doing for that kid? So, a student athlete who is trying to do more, trying to better himself, we're just looking at ostracizing just that kid. But what about the other kids? Now, at Franklin High School, out of a student body of two-hundred-and-assist-to-six kids, you have thirty young men out of probably one hundred in the building. The, most of the teams that we play, they have about eight to nine-hundred young men to choose from. So, by being a former coach and a former player, trying to save a life because that kid not reaching that two-point-oh but was eligible for Virginia High School League, we can, I feel like, give him a chance or give her a chance to try to amend themselves and correct themselves because all of us have made a mistake at, at a, at a younger age. And most of us received some assistance to try to get back on track. Now, six young men had the opportunity, two did what they were asked to do. But the other four cannot say that we did not give them a chance. Now, these two young men, they probably would take it. And I know one of the young, one of the young persons, the young man, um, I think he was almost close to all A's, wasn't it, Mr. Phelps? Yeah. He really pushed himself because he came to my office and said, "Mr. Bell, I won't do this again." So, that's what I'm talking about, trying to work with our, our young kids to give them a shot. And then, because we're real, we are really not on the same playing field. We really are not. Now, I recommend, which is another meeting, that we take a look at that two-point-oh based on our numbers. Now, that's another conversation that I know we had to have. But the number of, but the number of students that we have in our building, based on the teams that we are playing, it is an unfair field. Three out of four.
I, um.
And most of the, and most of the, the, the schools in our region, it is all, I think we're the only school in our region that has a two-point-oh.
I will.
Us and Winston, everything else is.
I will say this. I, I would like to say this. I wasn't aware, sometimes we don't know everything. I wasn't aware it was for more than one sport. So, volleyball got kids too. Every one of the kids that actually went on a team have a two-point-oh when they went on that team.
Checked by that man, right? Thoroughly checked. And nobody practiced because you cannot practice, you cannot be on the M.E.L. unless you had adhered to the contract.
I will, uh, accept that because they did try, and they did it. As long as they know that when they fall below it, they have to come on.
Yes, sir.
And their parents know it.
Yes, sir.
But I still believe, and again, it's for another meeting, but I'm going to put it out there in there.
Yes, sir.
The situation our schools are in, for our staff, the central Franklin High School and your staff, we need to keep instruction of both athletics and keep it deeper on that because, look at our, I agree with you. Now, we're on the day ball compared to other schools, but we still have success. The golf team just won the conference championship. We've won two state championships in football in the last ten years. Basketball, and we have success in that. So, we're still having success in the two-point-oh, so it does work as long as we provide the support at the school for them to be able to succeed with the control. So, you know, that's just my feeling, two cents on that.
I will congratulate Mr. Phelps and Mr. Bell for doing this because research shows that when students participate in athletic activities that they do perform better, and coaches tend to have that type of spirit that motivates and in many instances, change the lives of children. And I appreciate it. It's a motivational strategy, and I don't know if it's been tried before in front of the school division, but if you're saying that you have this number of students who said, "Hey, I can do this. I can get a two-point-oh in order to participate in something I thought you could do in, I thought you could do in, and I see it as being motivation." The next item on the agenda, important dates to remember. A lot of dates to remember, they're on our calendar, and, uh, I hate to even look at the list that becomes there at all.
What time are you planning on leaving for Charleston?
We'll have to leave at six. This is, this new life is allowing us to. Are we leaving from the school? Blake Black. Leave from the school.
So, we, uh, I talked to, yesterday, Barbara Cole has come back on staff at, uh, part-time at Virginia School Board Association, and she emailed me and asked me to call her about the training. And, uh, she talked to me yesterday, and I told her that we wanted the day structured around nine to one, and she said that's what she does anyway. She said that she never goes beyond one-thirty. So, if we, if we, if we start at nine, what time did you say we'd be here? She said six. Yeah, I guess that it does, but getting around ritual again. All right, so. Are there other, are there other questions? And we do know that we have Monday nights with the state council, Mr. Martin, who is in there. Are there other questions with the incident? If not, I need a, a motion to return to the code meeting. The top of the move is second, where certification is stated that we return to our session. Your motion's in a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I didn't hear. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, board members, let's give a special thanks to Mr. Spall, Mr. Harris, and Mr. Custer for setting everything up. Everything was dynamic. We appreciate that. Uh, team, you can go home. We'll close it up. Yeah, we'll, except for you, Gil. Yeah, yeah, yeah.